Okay, I am pleased to have with me as my guest on the John Riley Project, Poway Unified School Board Candidate Terry Norwood. Terry, welcome. How are you?
I'm wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate you visiting the fabulous podcast studio here in the living room.
It is fabulous. Everyone should try it out.
Okay, so anyways, I know, you know, we're really in the heat of your campaign, you know, was about two weeks, maybe a little less than two weeks until the big day when people vote. People are already voting now, and I know that's happening. So tell me, just how's your campaign going? What has been your experience when you're out there talking to voters?
Very exciting. You know, I ran two years ago, and that didn't have as much momentum behind it. I was my first time ever running for a public office, even though I'd worked on other campaigns. So I was kind of getting my feet wet. This time, it's been fast-paced. It's hard to stay ahead of it or in line with it, but it's been wonderful. Running into people at different places and saying, "You look familiar," and...
That's good.
Yes.
So if you have name-face recognition, that's a good thing.
Yes, and I'm very hopeful. I know it was mentioned at one forum that I'm trying to achieve the impossible, but I plan to make the impossible possible.
There you go. Okay, good.
So it's... Running into people door-to-door or out as I'm canvassing has been fun, too. Some people are well aware of what's going on, so the questions that I get from them are similar to what I've been following. And then other people want to know, "Well, what are you gonna do to change that?" And I know we'll get into all of that.
Right. Well, it's good to know that a lot of people are paying attention, because, you know, generally speaking, school board races are pretty far down the ballot, right?
And ours is on the bottom.
Yeah, okay. And so that doesn't mean it's not important. It just means that, you know, there are a lot of other high-profile, you know, US Congress, you know, bigger, higher-profile races are going on. And sometimes people don't pay attention to the detail, especially if they don't have a child in the school district.
Right.
But it's encouraging that there are people paying attention. And for those that do pay attention, I mean, it's like a reality show. I mean, there's just a lot of drama, you know? You know, the good, bad, and the ugly, right, that's going on.
Absolutely.
So amongst the people that know what's happening, you know, that have been following the news and paying attention, what are some of the issues that they raise that they are problems they hope that you can solve?
The budget is one of the big issues, and then the 3-2 split and not very much collaboration on the board. There's always arguing, it sounds like. So those are things that concern people the most, especially when I get into explaining what the board's responsibility is. They're an oversight committee.
Right.
And so they should really be working together in some way. You don't have to agree on everything and have similar personalities. I think it's actually better that you have different personalities. It's just, you need someone that is able to look at each person's strengths and call on those when needed, respect everybody's opinion, and then together, we're a team that listens to the district leadership, bring us the issues that are arising, and then we evaluate it.
Yeah, it's interesting. You say it's like an oversight committee, I mean, because sometimes people think of it as, you know, Congress, you know, it's Republicans and Democrats, you know, battling. And then, but on the other hand, a school board is a lot like a board of directors of a company.
Exactly.
Right? Where there are people that have a vested interest, in this case, a vested interest in their community, a vested interest in their children and the children in the community, a vested interest as a taxpayer.
Exactly.
And, you know, and a person that just is interested in the overall well-being of their neighborhood, of their community, of their quality of life. And so, yeah, you would hope that people could come together. I mean, honestly, I think people think Congress should come together, you know, and find those common values.
There's a lot more people in Congress.
There are.
And a lot more at stake.
There is. But it's for school board, they're, I mean, if you were to think of it like, I always think of it like a Venn diagram, you know, those overlapping circles. The overlap is huge amongst all the candidates that are running and the incumbents. It's a matter of finding those common values, right?
Right.
So how would you approach that when you're trying to maybe solve this logjam of the 3-2?
Well, I'm not an unknown to the board members, because I've been paying attention to what's been going on for quite a few years now. So my first task would be to have individual conversations, definitely nothing on the agendas, but get to know them more than I already do, so that I will know what their strengths are and what their interests are. For example, Michelle O'Connor-Radcliffe went to Stanford, has a special needs student, just like I do, and we have a lot in common. So work together on what we have in common.
Yeah.
And how we look at things. And so I think relationships foster people getting along. And that's a strength of mine, that the boards that I've been on before, professional development committees that I've been on, I'm the outside-the-box thinker, and so that's proven beneficial, because sometimes you need an outside-the-box perception to get you to collaborate.
Right.
So it's one of my strengths.
That's a good thing.
To look at each person, respect each person, and bring people together. And if we don't have the answers, then we go look for the resources.
Right.
We aren't going to be knowledgeable about everything. That's why we have lawyers that are part of it.
Of course.
We have the teachers' union that we discuss things with, the support staff union.
That makes sense. I mean, well, first of all, I think it's smart to try to build relationships, because in order to work with them, you know, you have to kind of scratch each other's backs, right? And so you can help other board members get what they want. They can help you get what you want, and together, everyone is happy, right? But to your other point, yeah, you don't necessarily need, I don't think as a school board member, need to be an expert on every single topic. That's why there are paid professionals that specialize in each of those niches, right? So you really are the voice of the people, you know, the voice of the parents, of the taxpayers, of the residents in your district, in Area C.
Right.
And you can translate what they want and what their concerns are in terms of getting that appropriate representation on the board.
And I won't be just representing District C. So even though District C people are the only ones that get to vote for me, I ran at large, and there are benefits to both. I know RB has been wanting a representative on the board for a very long time, so this is a good opportunity to get that, because I've been here for 20 years.
Well, you're the only RB resident running in Area C, right?
Yes. Well, and even in B, there's no one from RB.
Yeah.
There's a big portion of Rancho Bernardo in District B, but no one is from RB.
That's right. They're all Poway candidates in Area B, and then your two competitors in Area C live in Rancho Pena Squeados.
Right.
Wow.
So yes, that's not the only, should not be the only reason you vote for me, but if you can't think of anything else, watch more podcasts, look at my website, on the RB Planning Board, so many different things. I've been an advocate since I was 21 years old, so... But getting back to being a board and who are we gonna represent, just because we're in districts doesn't mean that we won't be focusing on the big picture in all the students.
Of course.
And we will need to have, I think we should have more subcommittees myself. I know at a couple of the events during this campaign season, it has been brought up that there are a lot of subcommittees. There are only two that get talked about and have been active this year, and one has only been active for like two months.
So what are the two subcommittees that exist, and which other ones should exist?
There's a budget committee and then a safety committee. The safety committee just formed two months ago, and that's part of why I'm running, is there have been too many incidents on school campuses and in our communities for the safety committee to have just been formed, or for any changes to have just been formed. I was PTA president at RB High when there was some safety issues that went all the way to the board, and the whole community came out to demand changes.
That was last year. There was that big incident at Rancho Bernardo High, right?
I was president last year, but I was president 14, 15, 15, 16.
Oh, wow.
After my son graduated, which he was like, "Mom, I'm leaving. Why aren't you leaving?" I said, "A little too connected."
You were the president of PTA after your kids had aged out? You are dedicated.
Yes. Well, if you were at RB High School, you would know that the vibe around there is exciting.
Yeah.
And people are connected. Dave LaMasters is just doing a fabulous job.
Yeah, I follow him on Twitter. He's a good guy.
Yeah, together with the foundation and ASB and the teachers. He does a great job of listening. And I was listening to what the parents were wanting, and so transformed grad night and the PTA programs. We got students on board, worked with the ASB director, Terry Rogelstad, and had the students come to our meetings to understand how the board should be run or a meeting should be run. And they became more involved. It was very exciting. So it's really been rejuvenated since he's been there, and a fun place to be. And gosh, state football champions, and so many other CIF banners.
Oh, yeah.
And the parents, they're just so dedicated. I know all the other high schools do, too, but that's the one I'm most familiar with. And I've enjoyed it.
It's amazing when a new leader comes on board and how it can transform the entire culture.
Exactly.
Right?
I'm gonna do that.
So you're looking through, we can look through the camera. I don't know, there's a word for that. It's like looking into the third dimension, or I can't remember what it's called, but that's okay.
Yeah.
This is just a podcast. This is not Hollywood. We can do whatever we want.
Kind of feels like Hollywood, but you know.
So that's great. You know, RB High, you know, my kids all went to Poway High. So, you know, big rivalry, green versus blue. But it's neat, though, that even though my kids went to RB, I mean, to Poway High, they've always had a great relationship with everyone from Rancho Bernardo. And they have a really, like you said, a lot of CIF banners. Their baseball team's always very good. You know, so outstanding. So, good, good.
Well, my daughter, when she, just to see how our family has transformed a little, my daughter went to Cal Poly Slow, so she had to change from a blue Bronco to a green Mustang.
Oh, no.
So we did make the change, and we have a lot of green in our house. My favorite color's red, and my college was red, so it's all good.
But you're Stanford, right?
No.
Because you were saying Michelle went to Stanford.
I just know that Michelle went to Stanford.
Okay. Where'd you go to school?
I went to Biola University.
All right.
Yeah. But as a bold student, I went back in my 30s.
You did?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yep.
That's hard to do.
It was very hard to do.
So you were a parent by then, right?
A parent of two, and a son that had been diagnosed with a learning disability and some challenges in our life as military, a military family. Of course, your traditional certain family members passing away, which has its own dynamics to any family.
Yeah.
But yeah, I'm pretty tenacious and stubborn.
That's good.
Work hard.
Stubborn, or you could maybe say persistent.
Okay, I'm persistent.
Okay. And that's good. Wow, that's remarkable. I mean, going back to college as a parent, a parent of a child with a disability, I mean, that's huge. That's a huge commitment.
It is, and I don't want to take that away from anybody else by saying that, "Well, if I can do it, you can do it." I think everybody's different and has to forge their own path. And I just knew as a teenager that I wanted to go to college. I don't know. I kept asking my mom if I was the FedEx kid, but she wanted to claim me, which is nice. I love her, too. So I made my plan for high school, you know, all the classes that you had to take to get into college, but you know how life goes. My parents divorced, then she remarried a guy in the Navy, so we started traveling the world, which has its benefits. And fortunately, I inherited a good perspective on life, that even though I didn't graduate with a 90, I graduated with an 89, because that's how they scored things, gave you, instead of 4.0s or 3.95s, I graduated with an 89.4. And because I had moved every year of my high school years, I didn't have enough credits to get into university.
Yeah, yeah.
So I didn't go to university. So bummer.
Where did, well, before your mother remarried, where did you grow up? And then, once you did begin traveling, where did you travel to?
Gosh, I grew up in Bell County. I say Bell County because my dad liked to move around to different jobs. So there were three towns that we would move periodically to, so...
And where's Bell County?
Texas.
Texas.
Doesn't everybody know?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so it's the heart of Texas.
Okay.
So I love football.
Well, yeah. Yeah. Friday Night Lights is big out there.
And it's right up there with religion, you know, so come on preacher, get over with. We gotta go watch this football game.
Okay. And then where did you live after that?
So my mom remarried at 16, and we moved to Italy.
Italy?
Yeah. I moved out of Bell County, had some road trips up to Ohio, where my dad's family's from. But other than that, went down to Corpus in Rockport area, a couple summers with some friends.
Yeah.
But that's it. So we get to Italy, and boy, that was a culture shock.
Yeah.
However, the Dodds schools are wonderful. The students that are there...
Dodds Department of Defense?
Department of Defense.
Okay, all right.
Those students have traveled all their life.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So they're used to having people come and go, and I think it was one of the best years of my life as a teenager, because you were accepted no matter what you were. It's ideal.
Where in Italy were you?
The football. Sicily, actually.
Here we go, football again. Okay, you're being punted. So Sicily, I always think of The Godfather, you know?
Yes, yes.
So, but it's...
I can't talk about those stories.
But the climate there is similar to San Diego, isn't it? It's kind of dry and warm, right?
Yes, yes. But it's beautiful, like San Diego, very similar.
Yeah.
Had a wonderful time traveling. Oh my gosh. So I think we had a class of 40, which is actually similar to the class I was attending in Texas, graduated with 39 other people. So in Sicily, we didn't have a lot of other schools close by that played the same kind of sports. So we would travel to Rome, Naples, Vicenza, Milan, to play against the other American schools. So the Diplomats kids or maybe an Air Force base.
Yeah.
So talk about living the high life. We would fly to these other cities, because we were so far south. I felt like an NBA player or an NFL team.
What sport did you play?
I played tennis and basketball.
Awesome. See, that's what you need a PUSD, is we need chartered airplane flights.
Right. We had a budget problem, yeah.
I know. I'm just joking. That is awesome. So wow, you're like 16, 17 years old. You're flying all over Italy, playing sports.
Crazy fun.
That's awesome.
And the people that I went to school with, the students, they're so talented. I have memories of, we would spend the night in the school, the classrooms, and one was a music room. And I remember one of the guys from the soccer team, he played the piano. So we would just sing and dance while he played the piano, and it was wonderful. We would walk the streets of Rome or Naples and have orangina and a loaf of bread and a ball of mozzarella. It was just a great experience.
That's great.
That I think a lot of kids don't get to have here.
How long did you stay in Italy until what age?
One year.
One year?
Yeah, because my mother had married him after he'd been there for already a year.
Okay.
So came back, middle of my senior year, graduated with the people I had left.
Oh, back in Texas?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I went back to Bell County.
Okay.
Yeah, and graduated from Troy.
All right.
Which is known as Troy Aikman now, town of Troy Aikman.
Is that where he's from?
Well...
Oh, you just call it that?
It was named that because it's named Troy. And he was big in the late 80s.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, he was, did he go to Oklahoma, or was he from Oklahoma? I'm trying to remember.
Wrong person to ask.
I know. Sorry.
I don't know that answer.
That's okay. That's okay.
I'll phone a friend.
Yeah, exactly. You have a lifeline. It's like, who wants to be a millionaire? No, but yeah, Troy Aikman, yeah. Well, yeah, he's, I mean, obviously, he's a cowboy, but I'm trying to remember where he went to college. Did he go to Oklahoma? I'm not sure. Anyways, that's an impressive, you know, I mean, you were, yeah. So how did you end up coming to San Diego?
Fell in love with a sailor.
I'm sure you're one of...
It's my mom's fault. I grew up near an Army installation, Fort Hood, Texas. And my dad was out of the Army by the time I came along, and yet we would still foster, so to speak, Army personnel, because they didn't all have families. So we'd have them over for dinner or afternoon, you know, bake cookies, whatever. And they were so crazy, and obviously, the food at the mess hall wasn't very good, so they ate my dirt cookies.
Oh, no.
Yeah, because I had to put them in a coffee tin, just like my mom, and they didn't know the difference. And, oh, I don't know that they have teeth anymore. Anyway, but my dad kept telling me, "No, you can't marry a guy in the Army. No, no, no. Guys have a stable life." And then...
Well, you didn't do that.
Nope, I didn't. So, yeah, they got a divorce. My mom met a guy in the Navy through a mutual friend, and we went to Italy, came back home for my graduation, and then we moved to Alaska, which is where his next, my stepdad's next job was.
Sicily to Alaska, with Texas in between there. Wow.
Yeah, so Adak, Alaska, which is in the third island in the Aleutian chain. So we're closer to Russia than America.
Okay.
And that was pretty cool, because you'd have Russian paraphernalia.
So the third island at the end of the chain?
At the end, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So Shima was the last, and then I can't remember the second one. And then Adak was the third one in.
How big was that island? Not very big.
I used to know all this, because I worked for the airline there, and I can't remember anymore. It wasn't very big, no.
There's a port somewhere along the Aleutian Islands that is, like, I always think of it as like a really rough place to live, and a lot of sailors, or like, not only sailors, but like private fishermen go in and out.
Kodiak?
Maybe. I'm not sure.
Ketchikan. There's a lot of places out there.
There are, yeah.
And it's all pretty rough.
Well, yeah, yeah, I imagine.
Because it's out in the middle of an ocean.
Yeah.
And the weather there is pretty intense.
Yeah.
Yeah. We got off the plane June 12th, and I think it was mid-afternoon, and there was a little bit of snow on the ground, and the sun did not set until 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. And it was back up at like 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning.
That means it's really cold.
It was very cold.
In June?
Yes.
Well, what was it like there in February? I mean, it's probably brutal.
In February? Not that I was one of these people, but there were usually babies nine months after February.
Oh, yeah. I understand. I know what you mean.
We called them alphas, whiteouts, because seven-foot snowdrifts, and you couldn't get to work. You couldn't even walk next door.
So you couldn't get out of your house?
No.
The snow all the way up against your front door?
Right. Oh, yeah, we had little heaters in our cars that came in from the garage, because...
How long did you live there?
Two years.
Wow.
It was fun. It was really fun. But I have this perspective that my parents gave me of adventure and put your best foot forward and look at the fun, because you're gonna miss the fun if you don't look for that. So...
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, this is terrific, because I think this gives you great skills, you know, as a person seeking public office, that you can relate to people in all kinds of different cultures and different scenarios, you know, different strata of the economic ladder, right? So you know how to be able to connect and relate to different types of folks.
Yeah, I think so. And I bought my first curling iron with our green stamps. I had no idea what green stamps were. I didn't know. We barely had any money growing up. I just thought toast and gravy was yummy, because my mother made it taste really good. I don't know what she did to it, because I certainly can't make it. You know how you get a craving for something you grew up with? Well, there is nothing like mom's toast and gravy, because I cannot make it.
It sounds like it'd be really easy to make, but it's probably really hard to get it.
There are no lumps, but it just doesn't taste good, as good as mom's.
She knew the secret ingredients, right?
Well, and I probably don't want to know, other than bread's just carb, and gravy is pretty much flour and water.
Yeah.
And so how healthy is that? Not. But I'm sure what made it taste good is something I don't want to know, because then I would probably not want to eat it.
Well, probably what made it taste good was your mom's TLC, right?
Sure, yeah. Little bacon grease or stick of butter.
Yeah, well, the stick of butter can work magic.
It can. It can, yes.
By the way, Troy Aikman went to UCLA, if that came to me.
You got it.
Okay. But he grew up, I think, in Oklahoma, but anyways.
That was a big jump, Oklahoma to UCLA.
Yeah, yeah, no question. So let's talk a little bit more about Poway Unified. And we talked a little bit about the 3-2 split, and let's, you know, you're running against two incumbents. I mean, you said, you know, you're trying to do the impossible, right? That's a steep assignment, but I'm sure you have a strategy on how you think you can kind of carve a path right between the two of them, I mean, without, you know, giving up your whole, you know, strategic plan. But can you give me a sense of what makes you different, and how can you open up that lane for you to maybe, you know, come in and at the finish line for victory?
How long did we say we got for this? Because I'm playing a lot of different cards. I grew up playing cards every Saturday night. If I wasn't dancing at the dance hall with my family, we were playing cards at the dinner table, so...
Are you a poker player?
Not a poker player. Well, maybe it was poker, but we didn't play with money.
Okay.
We just played some, what's it called? It's like a rummy.
Yeah, like gin rummy. Yeah, okay, I remember playing that.
So I'm playing a lot of cards. One is the easy female card, but having Terry as a name, I strategically put Teresa on the ballot, so that, you know, women card, you know, because I'm different in that way.
Yeah, you have to play up your differences.
And if you think 1992 was the woman of the year, you just wait.
Oh, this blue wave of 2018, there's supposed to be a lot of female candidates.
It's gonna be a tsunami, starting here, yeah.
Okay, good.
So that's one. And I'm getting some comments about that, "I didn't know you were a Teresa." Does that change me? I don't know what you want me to say to that.
Your mother and Teresa, maybe they're putting those two...
Oh, my kids have fun with that, too. It won't go there, though. And, yeah, some people were saying, "You're gonna split the Democratic vote, because one of the other people that's running is a Democrat."
Yeah.
I say, "Well, I'm not gonna split the Democrat vote anymore than I'm gonna split the incumbent vote." because there's two incumbents on there and they're, so I, I just put it back at people to say, think it through. Look at the, look at each person. I, I, there's a reason I'm running. The two incumbents have had four years to get things done. One of them has had many opportunities and he will be the hardest to beat. But I'm doing a very good job of, um, that's the right word.
It's okay.
Spoiling it. There's been a lot of, a lot of support. And I think they're tired of the three, two split. They're tired of, you've had four years, you're not getting anything done that we want you to get done. The budget has continued to, to be in a deficit. And there's been expenditures that have been put on the books that, um, we have no revenue to, to pay for ongoing. So our budget, our revenue is not sustainable for the expenditures. So, you know, the safety issue, there have been so many incidences at high schools and in the community where, um, there have been shootings. So there's been opportunities for the district in the last four years to, to improve the safety plan. It's, it's still dated 2013. I was on school site council at RB High at that time and we were evaluating the safety plan there. Why wasn't the board? Why haven't they done it? It's no excuse for that. That's your job. Ask some of the tough questions. Say this is where we need to be going. What is our vision? Does anyone know what our vision is? Do we have a plan? It just bugs me that there's no long-term plan. When I asked Ron Little, what, what is our budget? You know, 10 years down the road? And are we going to be able to pay for the billion dollar bond payments in 2031? And he said, well, we don't project out that long. What? Why not? I, I, one thing I'll be working on, we need to have a plan.
Yeah.
And the bond didn't pay for as much as it should have because it wasn't managed properly. There was no project director, um, for the school. Now we have a project director, but do we have a plan in place? Do we know what we need to be replacing on our maintenance, um, on the classroom side? Do we know how many tables and chairs we need? Do we know how many textbooks we need? I've been watching the board meetings for six or seven years now. And I was shocked at how old our textbooks are. Maybe not every class needs a textbook. Maybe it needs to have software that will be upgraded every year. But we've got a plan for this so that we know what needs to be upgraded when. There needs to be preventative maintenance and we need to be setting money aside to pay for when the hot water heater goes out, pay for when the HVAC goes out. RB High just had to, um, we, or the district had to take money out of the coffers to pay for an HVAC system at RB High because it wasn't taken care of in the bond. The bond was supposed to go for maintenance and not all the schools got maintenance. So.
Yeah, yeah.
There's not a plan. I want a plan.
Good, yeah, and, and you know, sometimes, you know, projecting out, you know, future years is a little bit of a crystal ball, right?
Sure.
But you still can have an, a, a roadmap. And while revenue from the state is, is unpredictable, you can make conservative assumptions. And then as far as expenditures go, well, you have a good sense of what your costs are gonna be because you know how many children are, say, in the fifth grade now.
Right.
That in four years, they'll be at RB High.
Right.
And so you can kind of work with those numbers and build a plan. Especially if you know there's gonna be X percent increase, you know, to, for labor costs or other expenses. But yeah, there, there needs to be a plan when, um, when that, that billion dollar bond comes due. And that'll become a due in, what, about 15 years, right?
I think it's 2031.
Yeah.
It was 20 years from.
So that's in 13 years. And so that'll be a pretty hefty, uh, line item in the budget that'll have to be paid every year.
And granted, there will be taxes that will come to pay for that. But the taxes we asked people to pay when we made the bond were not the amount that the bond is now because of the, um, the type of bond.
Because it's a capital appreciation bond, yeah.
And for people that are not aware of what that is, think of, um, your mortgage as having a balloon loan.
Yeah, like no, no payments to principal or interest for 20 years.
Right.
And then that just keeps building and building. And then come year 21, you've got these giant payments.
Right.
And that was, that was actually, when that was sold to the voters, it was sold without a tax increase. So I don't know how the heck they're gonna do it. So if we get you elected, there are no term limits. And you can do a great job and then help guide us by the time we get to 2031.
Well, I, I definitely want to guide us, um, to have a plan.
Right.
But without a plan, I mean, how are you gonna retire? You know, do you have a, if you're, the company you work, surely you have a retirement plan of some sort. Maybe it's small, maybe it's large, depending on your income or when you started planning. But, you know, this crystal ball, you, you hope to retire. So you put money into your 401, your Roth.
Yeah.
Maybe you get a little pension from the military or, um, like the teachers have a pension. But hopefully you're looking at that dollar amount and saying, I still am gonna need a little bit more if I wanna live like this because you have to incorporate inflation.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
Same for the district.
You know, and I've always said this, that I think the city of Poway does a really good job of this. You know, of, of planning for the maintenance on an HVAC system or planning for the replacement of vehicles. And, and doing it in such a way that they're not having to borrow, you know, significant money. They save for that rainy day and then they use that cash. If only our school district could follow their lead.
Yeah, and there is a reserve, but it's not very large anymore. And I did have one person, uh, that I ran into when I was knocking on doors that said, well, LA has, uh, in the millions deficit, whereas ours is thousands. Well, it's a million, anyway. And I said, so that's okay that there's that large of a deficit? Whether it's small, large, six-digit, 12-digit. Why is that okay? So I want to know more about our budget. I don't think the board knows everything there is about the budget. And that's clear with, um, the lawsuits, withholding, um, information to the whole board.
Right.
About expenditures for the lawsuits. Special education, we know a lot about it, but I don't think we know enough, um, to, for the district to advise a fifth associate superintendent to be hired. To litigate or manage the special education needs. To me was not the best plan. But again, there wasn't a lot of information at the board meetings. And that's where most of us get our information is going to the board meetings. And so as of today, um, I, or when elected, I want to ask some, some questions about that position. Because I'm not sure it was the best use of our time and money. I know that there are a lot of lawsuits out there and a lot of families that are having trouble having their children diagnosed and having their children's needs being met. But I don't think that hiring a fifth person at the top is more, is more important and will solve the solution than four teachers in a classroom, especially at the elementary level. So I would have asked those questions about why do we need, you know, call it a $300,000 district leadership package in salaries when we could have had four teachers in a classroom?
Right.
That could have done some more identifying or be special education teachers so that we can take care of our own. My story with my son is, is long and similar to other people's. But he was basically told, there's no room. We, he's not bad enough, so we have other people with bigger needs, really? And that's acceptable? Can you at least give me, can we have another program to where you can help me figure out what my son's needs are? Rather than waiting until sixth grade when he's failing everything and four years behind? That's a solution? That's absurd.
Wow.
So with my advocacy work that I've been doing since I was 21, which is almost 30 years now, I just couldn't handle that solution. And so I switched from my focus being for military families, um, to education and learned what I needed to know about an IEP process because at that point, clearly got an IEP. And that took a long time cuz there were two, at least 20 people at the table from the district and me and my husband sitting there, it felt like an inquisition.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so I, that just got this mama fired up. And I did my homework and wrote down all the different parts of the IEP to figure out what we would get from the school, what I can ask for. And then I worked with the school on what they thought would be best for him. And then we also, um, hired a tutoring company to help with those needs because it, it was clear to us that the school didn't have enough resources. And he was four years behind, so we wanted to help him catch up. So he needed more help.
So IEP is what individual education plan, right?
Yeah.
So it's a customized program that matches the needs of your, of your child. Well, they had the resources to hire another associate superintendent. The, the associate superintendent's not the one that's gonna be directly helping the child.
No.
And, and, that's a shame.
It's not about the person?
Of course not.
Um, yeah, we're not. Because he has a lot of experience helping special education families. It's, I don't think that was the best use of our money.
Right.
So it's things like that, that I will be evaluating and strongly ask for the background information as to why the district leadership who has a lot of the training to explain why. That was the decision versus more teachers.
It's, it's interesting cuz, you know, you're the fourth school board candidate that has been on the podcast. It's been you and, and Charles Sellers and then Ginger Kuvert and Kim Garnier have been the four. Every single one of them have told me that when they are out talking to other parents and families, it's all about getting more resources in the classroom, right? To be able, you know, whether it's textbooks or it's teacher's aids or it's, you know, more teachers, so there's less, smaller classroom sizes. It's all about getting more resources in that classroom. Yet we're still always coming up short, that there isn't enough resources to meet the needs of everybody. Meanwhile, you know, money is spent, you know, on a, an associate superintendent, probably a great gentleman, but maybe not the best use of resources. So, yeah, it makes you wonder like, what's the plan?
Right.
What are they thinking?
Can you tell us why?
Yeah.
Because eighty six.
What's the strategy?
Eighty four, eighty-six percent of the budget is for salaries for all the staff. Not, not just teachers, but district leadership, support staff, bus drives, everybody. So that means 14% or 16% goes for resources in the classroom and maintenance for our buildings and the technology.
Yeah.
I understand that labor is one of the most expensive costs when you get your car fixed or you have your house repaired or plumbing, you know, whatever it is. So there's even bigger reason to look at that 14% more prudently and ask ourselves, how can we do this better?
Well, or look at the 86% more prudently, you know, or I can't remember the number, 84%. But look at the, look at the labor expense and say, how can we do that more efficiently?
Which is tough when you want to provide teachers good rec, good salaries.
Sure.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that we need to transition at some point to a 401K type, um, retirement program for teachers and not just in PUSD, but for the state. So that's something else that I wanna do, um, is lobby the state. And like I did with for military families. So I was an advocate that would listen and go to focus groups and take information, gather it, send it to the headquarters office in DC. And we would, um, advocate to Congress along with 20 other entities in the military coalition for changes that needed to be made for military families. So we have dental benefits now, we have medical benefits. And all that's been done on my watch and I've been excited to watch it grow.
Bravo.
As a, as a brat, military brat, um, I didn't have dental coverage.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so I would go, you know, be the 100th person in line and get to go in a month later to have any dental work done. So we got dental benefits, but that's all military. So with that experience, I want to start in California in the education system and utilize my connections, the relationships that I've made with PTA. Work with the unions more and the support staff union. And businesses, which I think are very committed to having good education. And, and the stakeholders in our community that may no longer have children in the district, but will have grandchildren or they move to the area because they know school, this has, we have a prestigious school or had. And they know that we've got to maintain the value so that our homes maintain their value.
Yeah.
So it, it's a very viable process to get the community involved and then go to our state assembly members and go to Sacramento and say, you have got to change the LCFF funding formula. And you have got to put more money into our schools. And through that, we will, all the schools will be better funded. So while we're looking at our 86% and trying to figure out how we can squeeze a little more water out of that turnip.
Yeah.
We also have to be lobbying to the state.
Wow, there, there's a, you just put, you put a ton on the table right there. If you don't mind, I wanna comment a few things because you started talking about the pension programs. And, um, what's interesting is, is that there is this sort of incestuous relationship between, um, elected officials and, and unions that back them. And then the elect, the unions will endorse the candidate, help them get elected. The elected official will then help that, those unions and give them greater benefits, right? And so you end up in this pickle now, and at least on the, on the state level, right? That the pensions that have been promised to state employees and to teachers has been so generous, you know, to, to win their support. Now the pension fund has been unable to meet those lofty over promises. And now school districts like Poway Unified have gotta pull more money out of their pocket to meet this, this gap, to, to fulfill the pension obligation. And then that's less money that can be used to provide resources in the classroom.
And two things I wanna touch on before we get into that more deeply, if, if we want. Poway Unified's not the only school district that's having this issue.
Oh, all of them are.
Up and down California.
All California.
And businesses are having problems with pensions, which is why they're going to 401ks.
That's right.
So this is not unique to Poway Unified. So I'm not wanting to suggest anything that isn't already happening in.
But, but this is, this is a larger problem, right? I think this is where our state senators and assembly, uh, elected assembly representatives have gotta step up to the plate and address this. But as a school board member, as a school board trustee, you could be a great influencer.
I will be.
Cuz, cuz if you can help optimize not only the, the way that the pension program, it transitioned it to 401K, you could also optimize the LCFF, am I saying that right? LCFF formula, which is sort of.
Local control funding formula.
Which is sort of a, a black box, right? Where the money goes in and then suddenly Poway gets this amount. If that could be optimized, you could increase funding for Poway Unified. So we could not only take care of our employees and our teachers, but provide more resources in the classroom.
Yes, and maintenance on our buildings, you know, make them safer. Put in the appropriate gates. We need the gates that you'd be able to, that can lock from the outside or you'd push on them from the inside and move out.
Yes, okay.
That's gonna take a lot of money.
Yeah.
So.
You, you brought up school safety before and it's interesting cuz, like you said, the school safety committee, which I imagine are just citizens, right, that are participating, is that right?
Yes.
They're not the school board members themselves, so.
I think they're a part of it.
Okay.
There are some people that are on that.
But, you know, it seems like our school district has only begun taking safety seriously recently, since the incident occurred at RB High. When these school shootings have been going back, I mean, when was Columbine? That was in the nineties, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so it, it's surprising. You know, so it it's surprising that there hasn't been a better plan in place for that.
Right.
And, you know, and then when you need the money to provide those additional resources for safety and suddenly you have a budget deficit, well, there's no money.
Right.
You know, to to fund those initiatives.
Right.
So it's going to take a very innovative approach to that budget to to transform monies, re-prioritize expenses and clear space so you can put in those gates.
Right. One idea I have for that, and of course, I won't know whether we'll be able to do it until I go to school board training and know how funds are or can be allocated. But Poway Unified is trying to expand its career tech education program by bringing businesses in and sharing other job opportunities rather than every student going to college.
Right, so more vocational training.
More vocational. And I started that at RB High when I was PTA president. We expanded our college programs to include career readiness.
That's great.
That was the term Poway wanted. Had to educate parents on career readiness means the VOTech jobs that we grew up with.
Right.
But just more a broad understanding of the different types of jobs. You don't have to be a doctor. If you want to be a doctor, you can be a research doctor or you can go into you you don't have to go get a PhD to work in research. So just broaden their horizons on the opportunities.
Yes.
So what this has to do with the district, we can partner with local businesses that are willing to provide us a small level of training. So that maybe the leadership at the school is qualified to then update the safety plan, but also train other people within the school. I've I've been through safety training. I I worked with voluntary organizations active in disaster and have taken some Red Cross courses and there are things we can do to educate the parents, the students and the staff on better safety measures without having to spend millions of dollars on a program to educate. So it's relationship building. It's not just having to pay a bunch of money. I love Godiva chocolate, but it's not, doesn't cost me an arm and a leg. So if that, if you understand what I'm saying is just, it doesn't have to cost a million dollars to be an efficient plan. Or an effective plan. So I think we need to decide what our priorities are, for one.
Yes.
And I don't think the district has priorities.
Yeah, especially for, you know, creating new initiatives. There should be a prioritization that yet again, another great thing that the city of Poway does. You know, when Ginger Couvert was here, we talked a little bit about this where there are businesses in our community that want to be able to provide that additional training.
Right.
And imagine and and have actually even provided funding because those businesses are desperate for good employees.
Right.
So it's in their best interest to educate the local students to train them and build their skills so that they can go to work for the local businesses.
Internships.
Yes.
Love it.
Love it. What a great thing.
I think it's fabulous.
And so that's the out of the box thinking, right? So you you don't need to stay within the boundaries of the budget. We can get creative with these partnerships in the private private sector.
Yes.
Yeah.
Definitely, and and I did some of that at RB High with the electronics and paper recycling, went out into the community or yeah, community and found two organizations that would come to our school, made sure they were compliant with insurance and brought the students into it to work the program or work with the community and learn some, get the headphones off, you know, put the cell phones away, learn customer service.
Yeah.
And it was great. And it developed relationships in the community to where a couple other students went to those companies and started another fundraiser. So it's fundraising, it's not an internship, but it opened their eyes to other opportunities. And then we I wasn't PTA president at the time, I was grad night chairman, where we worked with the robotics team on a fundraiser together. And because they're all into the electronics, they met companies that came through our line to recycle and are working with them to figure out how they can further work together. I I haven't followed up on that. But there's this one neighbor that I met in Westwood that he will, he's going to connect with the robotics team at RB initially. And because he has a bunch of machines in his garage that the robotics team has at RB. And wouldn't it be great to put them together? The the adult could help mentor because there is, even though there's one teacher at the school, it's great to get more people from the community, knowing what these students are learning and giving them even more ideas, introducing them to their friends and businesses in the community. I just even though we're in this digital age, you cannot beat relationships in a conversation.
Well, it all comes down to that, doesn't it? It's all about relationships, about communication. And even though, yeah, it's, there's a lot of digital, in the end, business is done through relationships. Do they still, you know, when I was a kid in high school, I did junior achievement. Do they still have that? You ever heard of that?
Like in?
It was like a, it was like a, it must have been somehow affiliated with the school. And when I was in high school, we would meet like, you know, in the evenings and we we would brainstorm and come up with a product. And we would go out and try to sell the product. And we had mentors from the business community that helped us do that. So it was teaching us about entrepreneurship and team building and basic finance. And it was fabulous.
I'm not aware of something that that is exactly like that. But I do know that there's a club at RB that works with a business in the community. And together, they they hold events that put meals together
Okay.
for local, but then overseas.
Okay.
So it's
Well, it's along those lines.
Along those lines.
Yeah.
And I know the robotics team has worked with some some businesses, a few businesses in the community.
That's good.
But whether all of that that you described is part of a junior achievement program, I I don't know that specific about.
Okay, well, that organization, you know, I went to high school, oh, my God, I'm class of 82, you know, so.
The 80s were the best.
Yeah. We were the Vikings. I don't know if it even exists anymore, but it was a great program. If you don't want me switching gears a little bit, we talked a little bit about the budget and we're in a deficit right now. You know, and there's the structural deficit, right, which is the recurring revenue is less than the recurring expenses. But still, there is an overall deficit. I think it just recently went into deficit, if I understand it correctly. And the next couple of years are projected to be deficits. They do a little bit of long term planning, so.
Two years, always three years, yeah.
So how would you solve that? Because you can't magically make more money come out of the sky from Sacramento. So how would you optimize our spending to balance the budget?
It's going to take two or three different ways because I'm only one person on the board.
So let's assume you have the magic wand, that you could do whatever you wanted to do.
I'm going to develop relationships with the other board members so that we together can evaluate the budget and and come together to pass our solutions, okay?
Okay.
So that's one way.
Well, you have to do that, I agree. You gotta at least get a majority.
I could dream up, but if I don't, if there's not a board majority, it's not going to go anywhere. So the other thing is, you've got to have all the information. Every board member has to have all the information about the budget.
Right.
So if you don't have all the information, you can't be informed, you can't make the best decisions. So again, developing relationships so that people trust that I'm not going to do anything wrong, that I want to evaluate it so we can make the best decisions for the district. So I would want, I've already know one area that I want to look into and that's the special education area. What was the decision to have the fifth superintendent oversee student services, but predominantly special education?
Right.
I want to see that that was a good use of our money. The other is, I want to plan for the maintenance and then classroom resources. And until I look at other pieces of the budget to know where that money's going, I won't be able to make decisions on where I think we should cut or move or have different institute different plans. Because depending on what needs, where I think there might be an issue, like the legal fees that we pay, not just for special education, but there are so many fees, payments that are going to like six different attorney offices. Why do we need that many? I'm sure there's a good reason, but I'm not privy to that right now. Is it necessary? Should, I mean, I plan on having personal insurance so that should I ever need it, it's there and the community doesn't have to pay for a wrongdoing.
Oh, that's a very noble.
Anything wrong, but I'm, there's a particular instance right now where the district is paying for legal fees for something that a school board member did.
Well, let's talk about that because that's that's the 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 whole issue of the school boards that school board members that are being sued for the free speech violations of blocking people on their Facebook page. Are we talking about the same thing?
Yes.
And so, and you know, that's we Gabby Dow, when she came and visited, we spoke at length about that. And their personal they were created as personal web Facebook pages, but they are really de facto school board trustee pages to discuss school board business. They were blocked as anyone could do on a personal page, but as a public official, that's like blocking your constituents from talking to you.
Right.
Right.
So so look, it needs to be discussed and evaluated and transparent to the community.
Yeah.
Is it your school board Facebook page or is it your personal page?
Yeah.
You're claiming as a school board member, it is your school board member page. Then you need to treat it like a school board member. You're a public official, you should not block anybody.
Agreed. I mean, even even as, when you put yourself out there to be an elected official, you're going to get heat from some people. It doesn't matter how great of an elected official you are, just the nature of the of the game, right? So I even for a personal page, blocking people to me is just it's a foolish thing to do, you know, when you're an elected official, because it just invites this kind of controversy. And then and then, yeah, and then a tremendous amount of resources being wasted on legal fees to defend them.
Right.
But I again, I know you need to have all the facts when you, if you want to address it. But if we have 80 whatever percent of our school budget going to the costs of personnel for their for their salaries and benefits, et cetera. That's where you're going to need to figure out a way to make cuts and those are tough decisions.
Right. Right, and 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 they will be tough decisions because nobody wants to say you're cutting someone's salary.
Right.
But that's basically what that 86% is. So at the same time where I'm evaluating that 86%, I will have a plan, a parallel plan to work with the PTAs and the unions and our state assembly members to put pressure on the governor and the legislators to truly put money into education because how can we teach them? How can we be the sixth largest economy in the country and and have one of the lowest ranked schools in the in the nation? That that just blows my mind. So why aren't we putting more money into our schools? So that we can educate the the students in our state to be part of that global economy. And then the state's doing a little bit better with the universities by offering free tuition for the first two years at a community college. And there are some criteria, so look that up before you blanket that. And I think it starts this year for the graduating seniors. But I think it was like 17%, it might be up to 20% of our students in state went to our schools. So that means our kids have to go out of state and pay higher fees.
Geez, don't get me started on this one.
Well, but it's a fact.
It is, that's unbelievable.
They're they're, they can't move past the elephant in the room, yet I don't I don't understand. I, and this is the part of politics I may never understand, but that doesn't mean I'm not going to try.
Well, you should and and Bravo for trying because we knew, we do need to transform the model. If you don't mind, I want to share my opinion on this. This is, this is important. And roughly speaking, about half of the state budget goes to education. Now, that that includes higher education, but also K through 12. So I I don't know if it's like in the high 40s or the low 50s, but it's around 50%. And we are in unquestionably the highest tax state in the nation by far. If you look at our income tax rates, our sales tax rates, our gas tax rates and even our property tax, while the rate itself, you might argue, is low, the dollars that we spend is high because our property value is so high.
Right.
So there's a huge amount of money going to education, in my opinion. The question is, is how is it spent? Okay? Because if you look at the ratio of teachers to non-teachers, to administration or staff, that ratio was real close to one to one or two to one, but now it's dramatically different. And there are so many more people involved in schools that aren't teachers. And those costs are significant. In my opinion, it's going to take out of the box thinking to be able to prioritize all of these non-teaching jobs and how important they are. It's also going to take out of the box thinking to see how teachers can teach more students more effectively. You know, using new technology. You know, I I've always been a fan of of identifying the best safe physics teacher in all of Poway Unified and then putting them into the the Rancho Bernardo Performing Arts Center and having a lecture hall for students that are on college track because they're eventually going to be in those lecture halls.
Yeah.
And that way, the number one physics teacher can move around all the different high schools. And instead of having, I'm going to make this number up, 10 physics teachers, you could have one really good one and then a junior person teach more kids, less money and do it more effectively.
Certainly an option, and that's also an option that I was thinking of more with the CTE model because we have firefighting at Mount Carmel, we have digital media at RB High, we have mechanics and FFA at Poway High. But not all the students in the district are able to attend those because they don't go to that school. And even though there are few inter-district transfers for students to go to that, it's not, it's not publicized.
Right.
And and there's a reason for that probably because how would we make that work? A lot, what if we had a lot of kids that wanted to go to Poway High for FFA or mechanics or what if? So so the school couldn't possibly handle that many, which is why we haven't advertised it as much. I don't know the exact reason, but I think in order for our students to have the most opportunity to be successful in life and a career that they want, we have to give them other broader opportunities.
Yeah.
Not just all college, AG.
Right.
And I think we need to look at a different way of putting forth the CTE programs in a similar way that you mentioned, but we're not having those conversations.
No, and and this, this is the conversation to have. Because we look at it in the news, the kids are graduating from college with $100,000 in debt and they've got a, forgive me for saying this, but they have a a degree in classical art history, you know, or something like that, that isn't as marketable in in the workforce. And then they end up working at Starbucks. And you're like, well, this person could have been, you know, gotten an internship, developed some skills and and then pursued a a money-making career that didn't involve college. And maybe they went to college at night and pursued their love of classic art history.
Right.
But they didn't depend on it, but.
And I hear Starbucks is, you know, helps pay for college, so, you know, let's let's let the students know. You go to So no, let's, let's, let the students know. You go to Starbucks every day. Why don't you get a job there?
Well, yeah.
And now I don't know the program in depth to know if Starbucks has you go into specific fields so that they can then hire you or, you know, if you have to pay back, kind of like the military ROTC program, but who knows?
Who knows?
Need to have that conversation.
There are definitely employers. I mean, you know, your daughter went to Cal Poly. My daughter is going to Cal Poly. And when, you know, she's going to be, she's already been hired by an accounting firm and they're going to pay for her to get additional education beyond her bachelor's degree. I mean, so there's all these resources that are available. But I want to circle back to this other point we talked about, how each of the high schools has their own area of specialization, you know, and it's not heavily publicized. You know, you, you mentioned Poway with ag and mechanical, but like Westview has ROTC, another great one.
Yeah.
To me, this is a hidden gem that could be unearthed. And you could provide a, a method where students could imagine having your, your, you know, your math, science, you know, English classes in the morning and then after lunch, going to one of those schools for those special, you know, C, what do you say, CTE? What does that stand for?
Career Tech Education.
Oh, yeah. So, so go to these other schools for CTE. I mean, if there is a demand for this thing, you can find a way to do it. And, and sure, some schools are going to get a surge of students coming to theirs, but those, there's going to be students at that school that are going to want to go to a different high school and it could potentially even out.
Well, what if we just threw the idea out there and had students fill out, what are the forms they fill out every year for the classes they want for the next year? Forget the name of that form, but, and we don't change anything, but we take that information and we work on it and, and then figure out a schedule that might work.
Well, you know, that, that's one way to do it. We could also be strongly encouraging transfers within the school district. You know, I mean, if, if there, if there are children that live in, you know, I'm going to make this up, they live in Penasquidos and they want to come to Ranch Bernardo High. If they were able to get transportation, great. Maybe we can find transportation for them. But if they have a desire to go to that school to get that special CTE training, we should figure out ways to make it happen.
And I think the district would say, we will. But I know that it's not that easy.
Well, yeah, nothing's easy. I mean, anything worth living for that has value is difficult. But he takes.
There are many people that don't even know about the CTE program.
That's a problem.
And so this year is my third year of helping with the Poway Unified College and Career Fair.
Yeah.
This year I was co-chair and I brought in more workshops that shared different occupations. I had Lynn McConville there. Well, she chose to be there, which I'm very grateful that she was there to educate people about that program.
Terrific.
So it's, it's, it's an education. It's, you know, times are changing than when we were in school. So we need to inform our parents, you know, that's what the PTAs are there for. That's what the foundations can be there for is the ongoing education of the parents, awareness of not just the programs that are available, but the dangers. You know, the little zip drives that are really not zip drives, parents, okay?
Okay, yeah, I know what you mean. I know what you mean.
But that's, that's where we have to utilize our PTAs, which are a great source.
This is where you come in, right?
Yeah, and go to them, inform them and have them educate more parents.
Right.
They're at the units, they're at the schools.
Agreed. Because I'm sure the, the, the hired employees within the district office are probably burdened and they've got a lot of things going on. You're the out of the box thinker, right? So you have the relationships with PTA and all these other community organizations that you've participated in. You could be the evangelizer of CTE.
Oh dear. I'm not sure that's a good word to use for me.
Okay, pardon me. I know Apple, the company Apple has always used that term, you know, to kind of spread the word.
Yes, yes.
But you could be the oracle. How's that?
There we go.
Okay. And to share that message and publicize that message, not just in Area C, but in the whole district. Because you don't really hear that from the other school board members. You know, they're kind of hunkered down really in the minutia of what's going on with the school, school district. There's no one that's really, you know, kind of the, the voice to the community. That could be you.
That's kind of what I've been doing for thirty years.
Yeah, but if you were on the school board, you have a greater platform to do that.
And only the voters can make that difference.
Well, good.
And together, we're going to make a change. That's, that's been my motto is you can make a difference with your, your work, with its special ed, CTE, VAPA, the, the visual and performing arts, whatever. But together, we can be a united voice to say, this is where we want to go, to our district leadership, but also to the state. So, so with the state and the funding, it's going to be changing the way, like you said, the California, the way the state gives the money to the schools. And that's the CLCF, the Local Control Funding Formula. It's not equitable.
No, it's not.
So that, that needs to be evaluated.
I, I know that, again, I remember the numbers from about four years ago, but Poway Unified, the money per child, per student, excuse me, per student per year was a thousand dollars less than what San Diego Unified was getting, you know? And it's just crazy. It doesn't make any sense.
Right.
But it, but it's driven by all kinds of unusual, the, the formula is, is a.
Outdated.
Outdated. It's archaic.
Complex.
It's, it's a cluster.
Just higher than calculus.
Yeah. So that needs to be addressed.
Yes, absolutely.
Because it's, it's not, it's not right. I mean.
Don't be afraid to, somebody's got to have these tough conversations.
Right.
And I say, the incumbents have had four years to do that. One has had more of an opportunity than the other because of the three-two split. So now let's just get a clean slate, get me in there. I'm not afraid to have the, I've got four years to prove that I'm not afraid to have these conversations. And I do it with amicable conversations. I listen and I need to be taught too. I don't know everything, but I'm willing to sit down at the table.
I have a new campaign slogan idea for you.
Okay.
So Terry Norwood, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush.
I'd prefer to go to a Hamilton, Hamilton slogan.
What was that?
I've used a couple of them and my daughter says, you know, everybody knows about the movie Hamilton or the, the play Hamilton, so I got to cut back on it. I want to.
I haven't seen that. I hear it's fabulous.
Fabulous, yes. We, we did get to see it, very, feel very blessed. It's, I want to be in the room where it happens.
Ah, that, that's.
I'm not going to sing it.
Okay, no, but that's, that's from the movie, that's from the play?
Yeah.
No, just if you don't mind me asking, did you see it when they traveled into San Diego? Or did you, you saw it on Broadway?
San Diego.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah. Good deal.
I always, yeah, I remember when it was, it was maybe what, about six, nine months ago? It was really hot and heavy for Hamilton, right? When did it come out?
Here it was.
Yeah.
But it had been on Broadway for a couple of years before it got here. Yeah.
How much were tickets on Broadway? They were well over a thousand dollars.
Well, here they were over that, closer to the date. Yeah. We happened to, well, we knew ahead of time because we're history musical people.
Oh, good.
And my daughter knew all of Oklahoma before she was three. Took her to see it at Moonlight because we lived here way back then. And she was like, that's not the way it goes. She doesn't look like that. I'm like, Lauren, sit down before they kick us out of here. So we loved these. So she got online or got on the phone to look into season tickets or how much would a Hamilton ticket cost? Well, it was like over a thousand. And then the person on the phone was wonderful and said, well, what if you considered season tickets? You know, because they try to push season tickets, right?
Good.
Got to make those sales.
Right. Smart person.
So I'm not afraid to say she was offered eight hundred dollars for season tickets last season to see for, and so we bought five, for five of us bought tickets, season tickets.
That's awesome.
Hamilton, eight hundred bucks, which is a heck of a lot of money for a play. I get it.
Oh, but that's a special event.
Seven shows actually.
Yeah.
And then as it got closer to the day, she was getting emails asking if she would want to sell her tickets.
Yeah, well, that's, see, and that would, that's maybe the entrepreneurial opportunity there.
No, we, it was awesome. We turned it into a family night.
Good. And well, for to you, the value was much greater than eight hundred. Uh, yeah, I haven't seen it. I, I really want to, because I'm like a history guy and I, I enjoy musicals as well. Hey, let's talk about, you know, the whole notion of performing arts as a curriculum at Poway High, or excuse me, at Poway Unified. Forgive me, my children with Poway High, it's in my brain.
I'll do that too. I understand.
Tell me your thoughts. I mean, everyone wants more performing arts education, especially at the, at the elementary levels. But it's always a question of funding. Some schools have foundations. There's inequitability in funding. So what are your thoughts on that topic?
On visual and performing arts or foundation inequitability?
Yeah, the whole thing.
Boy. I firmly believe student, students learn differently. Like my son was deaf, so he didn't learn his alphabet. So he had to, to go through speech pathology and relearn. That's maybe not the best example, but there are students that can do well in a Montessori-type program, which is similar to Design Thirty-Nine. Then there are other kids that are more tactile. So you take a little bit of the Montessori and you do what we try to do in public education, make it more streamlined or what would you call it? Systems in place. I'm not a teacher, so I'm not sure these are the right words, but student, basically, children learn differently. So we need to offer different opportunities. And some kids, if they can learn about history through music, why, why not? Why not have those options? So that's the great thing about PTA is we offer this reflections program where students can submit their form of art, whether it's in writing, video, dance, of whatever the theme is for that year. Why can't we do that in the classrooms at different times? And I do know that there are teachers that, that offer that. So to me, ensuring that we have arts K through twelve is important. Right now, in elementary school level, there is no funding for art. It's paid for by the PTAs to pay, well, the volunteers don't get paid. They pay for the program and then volunteers come in and teach students about art. So that covers pretty much the, the arts part or to some degree.
Yeah, but you, you brought up something that I had never considered before. And, and it was usually people think of, you know, visual and performing arts as this sort of separate entity, this separate universe from all of our traditional reading, writing, arithmetic, history, et cetera. But there's no reason they can't be combined, you know? And you can teach history through the visual and performing arts. That's powerful. And you can accomplish, you know, you can get great leverage in your budget doing it that way. Because the thing that strikes me is when you're talking about learning history through like a play.
Yeah.
We're talking about Hamilton and how wonderful that is.
Yeah.
Now compare that to the alternative and you think of, you know, Ben Stein and Ferris Bueller's Day Off, right? Anyone knows Smoot-Hawley? Anyone, anyone? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, traditional history classes might work for, you know, highly motivated college track AP kids, but not for everybody.
Well, even some of the college track AP kids are not just book learners.
True.
You, we think of education in the classroom as give them a book and they learn from the book. Not everybody is that type of a learner.
That's right.
So to have alternatives, like I know there's at least one professor, sorry, professor, profi.
Okay.
That teaches Spanish that has songs for the students to learn Spanish.
Yeah.
I remember when I was in high school, there was a teacher who taught us the first-person pronouns. Ai he shi we de. Okay? I remember it. Thirty years? No, it's over thirty years.
That's awesome.
So incorporate a little bit of it, no matter how goofy you look.
That's how people remember. Yeah.
Exactly. So I'm definitely for the integration of that. And when I took the character counts training, which is supposed to be big in Poway Unified. No one picked up on that because it's just us, but there needs to be more character in our.
I completely agree.
So when I was at that training, we had to come up with a plan to teach character. And so the two teachers that I was put in a group with came up with a song. I can't remember the song, but it was popular at the time. Might have been Happy, a Happy song. And it was great. We looked silly. We were off key, but we had a lot of fun. And it was, it was well received. So that's the, I think we, we should always, we should have visual art, visual and performing arts, K through twelve, and that's just going to take, supporting the PTAs right now because there's no funding for it in the elementary school levels and then collaboration with the different departments at the schools to.
It's out of the box thinking, isn't it? It is. And that's what you're good at. That's what you represent is the out of the box thinking, this different approach, right?
Yay.
Right? Because your competitors, they've been battling it out three to two on the board.
Yes.
Grudge mode, you know, and then here comes Terry.
Doesn't get us anywhere.
Right, here comes Terry. Here comes Teresa Norwood, you know, with these new ideas, you know, and collaborating with PTA and with, you know, businesses in the private sector. And you have something unique to offer.
I do. It's my time.
It is your time. So what, so what did you learn from when you, you said, when you ran two years ago in 2016? To compare it to now, now it's a lot more, you know, intensity, it's faster moving. But what were some of your learnings from your old campaign that you have changed in your approach this time?
Politics is politics, like it or not. You can't change everything. So you have to learn to play politics and do your best to be ethical. And that doesn't even sound good enough for, for what I mean. You, you have to be confident in that who you know you are and that your friends know who you are, your, your relationships that you've built. They all know who you are. So that when the negative stuff comes out, you can stand firm that you know you didn't do that. And keep trying because you know you're doing the right thing.
Right.
So two years ago, I was very qualified for the job. But there were certain people that didn't want me in that job. So I'll leave it at that because I don't like to go the dirty route. But that's definitely what happened. And I think many of those people see the work that I've done in, just in the last two years and then have looked back at the work I've done for over thirty years and go, wow, it's time.
Good.
And that is why I have gotten so much more support this, this time around.
Well, it's, it's not uncommon for people to take a couple of tries before they are victorious. I mean, even one of your competitors, TJ Zane, he ran what, like ten years ago, twelve years ago and lost? And then he came back a second time and won. So it's not unusual and you've proven yourself. But I think you touched on something that's really important and that is authenticity, right? Just to be you, to be yourself and, and stick to your own core values, your own sense of what's ethically right, what's moral. And yeah, in a political campaign, there's always a bunch of trash being thrown around and it can get ugly. And we've seen that in various school board races, both now and previous. And particularly in your unique Area C race, we're seeing it. Yeah, so if you can stay true to who you are, then all that trash just. Yeah. So if you can stay true to who you are, then all that trash just goes off your back. Like I said, like water off the back of a duck, right?
Yeah. And you know, there are people that use the, the quick line to say, oh, you just got to toughen your skin. Well, yes, you do.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I'm still human like anybody else. So you know, the, the skin gets a layer taken off when somebody tries to do something, you know, unethical.
Right. Or they'll try to mischaracterize your position.
Right.
You know, like, like, like we need to save money on our school board, our school budget. And then all of a sudden people say, oh, you want children to starve, you know? You know, people will distort positions for political hay. And you think that, oh, that only happens in DC, but it happens right here.
Oh, yeah.
It happens in nine, two, one, two, eight zip code, right? Even in the school board race. Amazing. Wow. You know, I, I, I remember, you know, I, when I ran four years ago, I, I said to myself that I should have taken better notes in my journal through the race because it would have made great content for a book.
Oh, yeah.
You know, or a screenplay. Cause all the stuff, I mean, tell me, what's the most unusual thing that you've encountered in, in this campaign season? The craziest thing someone's asked you or the weirdest circumstance you've run across?
I didn't prepare for that question.
I know, I know.
Weirdest. Okay. I've traveled the world. I'm not sure I, I.
You've seen it all.
Anything surprises me. So weird.
Anything unusual? You said you were, you were spotted by the paparazzi, right?
Well, I called him the paparazzi because it was so unusual. So as much as I put myself out there and I'm active in the community, it still causes me to blush when someone says, you ran two year, you ran two years ago, didn't you? And I'm looking at them going, what, what did I run?
Yeah.
You ran for school board, right? And I said, actually, I, I did. It's amazing you remember that. They said, well, we need you to run again this time.
Good.
And like, I don't know who you are.
That make you feel good, didn't it?
It made me feel good. It made me, somebody listened to what I was saying two years ago. And I think I know where I know them, that person from, and it was the high school and I'm very active or was very active at RB High. So they see that I'm doing what I say I do. And I'm the outside the box thinker. And you know, we had a, a meeting with at least thirty parents, which seems like a low percentage for the amount of students that graduate at the high school. But when you think about how many parents actually participate, having thirty parents in a room discussing one particular issue is, is big.
That's a big deal. Yeah.
So we discussed whether to have grad night on campus or off campus. Parents have a say. Yes.
Imagine that.
Have a say.
Yeah.
Yeah. So let's look at both sides, you know, let's look at how much it costs to go off campus. Let's look at how much it costs to do on campus.
So you were the chair of grad night at RB, right?
A few years.
Did you just do this past one, twenty eighteen?
Yes.
Oh, wow. I just know that's a gigantic project.
It is, but we've streamlined it and it's so cool. It's, it's, it really is different at RB. And I think there's another school that's, that's bringing in some of the same ideas. So we did it in twenty ten when our daughter graduated. And that's when it was huge and all the schools were keeping up with each other and outdoing one another. And we were all in this big warehouse building things and we're like, ooh, I like that. Can I borrow that? And so they bring it over here and build it, make something even bigger. And they're like, I want that back now. But you traded back and forth with each other and, and shared ideas. It was great. Twenty thirteen, I think it was thirteen or fourteen, there wasn't a grad night chair at RB High. And a friend of mine knew that I was trying to get back into the school since I was moving over from being a Harrier helicopter mom.
I saw that on your video on your website. That was a really good description.
Military, you know?
Yeah.
So I wanted to move over as, as the Harrier mom and let my son do some self advocacy and make some mistakes in a safe area between myself and, you know, the school. So I said, I'll do that. But I said, we're gonna, we're gonna stay off campus because it had been taken off campus. So I want to see what it's like off campus so that I can understand that and not just be a proponent for on campus. Oh, I've done, I was just the construction chairman in two thousand and ten, which is huge. There was that year. But being the whole or the committee chair in two thousand and thirteen, I think it was, even off campus, that was a lot to coordinate.
Yeah.
And my biggest, my biggest stress was the busing, getting the kids on the bus, staying nearby the, at the bus. And then when we were there, keeping the kids on the site and back on the bus and back home and getting the parents to ride on the bus as chaperones, because you have to have that. So, and, and the thing, the other thing I didn't like about the off campus was it was more expensive and we couldn't provide the students as much games and stuff. Because we had to do the busing, which costs a lot of money.
And probably rent a facility.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I did that though, so that I'd get an understanding of what it's like. So the next year is when we had that. Well, I did it on campus. And I included a few kids and a few parents because it was brand new again and there wasn't a lot of support. But we went, I made a smaller diagram of what it was like in twenty ten and painted all the panels black and had the party pals, I think it was, come in with all the games and stuff. And it was simple, but it, it worked. So the next year, I thought, you know, there were some grumblings about, oh, that didn't work very well, blah, blah, blah. So we had a meeting. And that's when the thirty parents showed up and we had a discussion and I, and I, I showed them the numbers for both of them. And on campus is significantly cheaper.
Yeah.
And you get more entertainment.
Yeah.
And there's just something about having your last party on campus.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people that think, yeah, whatever. You're going to grow up and go out into the real world soon enough.
That's a, that's a lifetime memory.
Yeah. And so let's make it easier on the people that are putting it together and make it a little more financially feasible. Because when it's off campus, the tickets are higher too. Not only do you have to fundraise more, but the tickets are higher. So, so that's what we've done. They may do something different now that I'm not there and that's fine. They have that prerogative.
Well, each person comes in with the torch and they make it better.
Right. That's right. Better or different, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I loved transforming it because the second year, that's when I asked the art teacher to have their, her students involved. So she.
Beautiful.
I said, this is kind of where we're going. And she had some of the students design a facade. Because we went from that whole three D building, the Hotel Dell thing that my husband built that was absolutely fabulous and beautiful, but very time consuming and it costs a lot more money. And the kids weren't involved. So I wanted them to be a part of it so they could have some ownership and then make some decisions, see how those decisions affected.
Perfect.
You know?
Yeah.
So the art class designed facades and then between some, I think it was ASB and some parents and PTA, we picked the facade based on ease of transferring it and painting it and getting done. And we turned the facade into just a one dimension panel. There were like thirteen panels that were nailed together. So they drew the artwork for the facade and then they painted it. The last two weeks of school, the art students came over and traced it and painted it. It was awesome.
They probably did a great job. They were probably excited about it.
Yeah. Digital media would film some of what we did. Screen printing class, they, we gave them the theme for that year. So they came up with different designs. We had probably ten to thirty, depending on the year. And then between ASB and the parents, we, at PTA, we picked the, the shirt design. And then the screen printing class printed the shirts.
So awesome.
Yeah. Engineering class, they're the ones, I mean, all of them wowed me, but there's one year, one parent got involved with engineering class. They would definitely make the fire pits with the fake fire. So they had to download somehow to make a fire pit with, to look like real flames.
Yeah.
And they got points in class for doing that. One year a parent got involved and they made a volcano that worked. It was so awesome. Gosh, what else?
So this is almost a little bit like CTE that we were talking about before and all these innovative ways to teach kids interesting things in interesting ways. While also getting added value, in this case for grad night.
And, and buy into it.
And buy in. That's gigantic.
Yes.
Because how proud were those students at grad nights telling their friends, hey, see that over there? I did that.
So we put the facade up like the Friday before graduation so that they could see it the next Monday. Not just the seniors, but freshmen, sophomore and juniors. There were kids taking pictures in front of it.
Oh, I bet.
It was awesome.
It just probably blew everyone away. Like, oh my God, what is this? Yeah. That is so cool.
So it was hard to leave RB of all the, you know, coming on board and having so many connections with Dave LaMaster, you know, I didn't know I'd have those connections, but he went back to school in his thirties like I did. He has a Lauren and a Sean like I do. He was wearing a little cross shirt that day and I'm thinking, this is just voodoo. But we got to talking and I signed up for, or went out for school site council and worked with him on the safety plan there. The LCAP where the funding would go. Modifying what the needs were based on the results from last year's, not just testing, but evaluations from the teachers in the classrooms. Very eye opening. And then the parallel working with PTA, then I got a little more excited and wanted to make some changes. So I became PTA president. So.
This is great. I guess you, you were PTA president. See, this is what's, what makes you different than, than, you know, than Zane or Sellers. Is that you have that connection at the grassroots in all these community organizations. You know, where Zane and Sellers, Zane particularly is a much more of a political animal. You're much more of the community. You know, granted their parents as well, but you've been very active in the activities in those high schools. And what, PTA, grad night, what else am I missing? Those are two huge ones.
College and career readiness programs. I added the career readiness to the RB High School college programs section because I didn't want it to be all about college. It's not every kid is going to go to college.
That's right.
Sorry, I said it. It's true.
Well, they shouldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not a good fit for everybody.
Yeah. And my son's studying to be a firefighter. He did go to Palomar for two years, much to many people in the district's surprise. But we won't get into that.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, that's a good career.
Special ed can go to college.
Of course. Yes. Especially if they're, if, if, if they know how to teach the, those students properly. They can maximize what they get out of them.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it comes from building that child within, helping that special needs student, any student showing, finding their potential.
Yes. And that's why it's individual learning, right? Because they've got to craft it just to make that rose blossom.
Right. And, and I've not only been active in the schools. I, I've been active with military.
Yeah.
But also in Rancho Bernardo. Last year I was elected to the RB Planning Board. And I joined the community foundation because the community foundation is the one that has been giving grants to the schools. So I've been recipient of those grants at, at the high school level for grad night, for the programs. So once my kids graduated, I decided to join that group to raise more money so that we could give more back to our community.
Oh, wonderful.
So those are, those are two prominent organizations in the community. But also in the area of Westwood, we've had parking issues and the South Palomar College campus come into RB. And I wrote a letter early on when we were still in the EIR process, which is an environmental impact report. That started off saying, I enjoy college communities because of the diversity that, of people it brings in in the culture that is, that is established in the, in the community. And I would love if Rancho Bernardo could become one of those communities.
Sure.
However, I have seen that Palomar wasn't coming in very cordially. They had some community forums. But when you look at what their plan put forth, it wasn't very friendly to our community. So not only did I attend those community forums with Palomar, but I went to planning board meetings, community council meetings, talked with my neighbors. And the consensus in our community was this will really impact us, not just from parking, but the traffic on Rancho Bernardo Road. And then in a disaster, like if we have another firestorm, it's a whole nother group of people that are going to be put on RB Road. And for our part of the neighborhood, that's, that's going to be a huge impact. So I helped to get a petition together so that Palomar College would have to take our concerns more seriously. And, and it, and it did. Mark Kersey helped the city have a larger voice so that we could have a better traffic pattern. And it's yet to be seen if that's going to work, but that's what we have right now. The college is, has given the students free parking for the year. We're finding a few glitches with that, but we at least have a relationship with the college now that we've, we've talked to them about that and they're working on educating the students. So I'm, I've been involved in our community a lot too. So I have a lot of connections to bring to the district to help us with internships or fundraising. I've worked recently with PUSD Foundation, Partners in Education and the CTE program with the College and Career Fair. So we've already been talking about things we can do in the future. School board member aside, so.
This is terrific. I mean, again, I'm just trying to think of the ways that you're special, you know, when compared to your two competitors. And alls I keep hearing is Rancho Bernardo this, Rancho Bernardo that. That's a great thing. Because they're, they're peneoskeitos guys. You're, I hear Rancho Bernardo PTA, Rancho Bernardo Grad Night, Rancho Bernardo High School, Rancho Bernardo Planning Board, Rancho Bernardo Community, what was it? The Community?
Foundation.
Foundation. Pardon me. Active in Westwood and, and the addressing the issues of Palomar College. I mean, you're the RB candidate.
Few, okay, yeah.
You are.
And Neighborhood Watch Director. So that gets me all over RB to help transform. We're going, doing a sign survey to find out where the signs are, the Boras signs, so that we can replace them. I got a grant from the community foundation to replace some of those signs.
Nice.
So it's not just Westwood. And I think what we can do in RB will benefit our neighboring communities by being safe and aware and keeping our community up and being a hub that has good business and is neighborly. That will make our neighbors want to come to us and utilize our businesses and encourage people to continue to move here.
Nice.
Keeping it modern, changing with the times. Cause it's changing from the retirement community. It was established.
Oh, yeah. 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 We've evolved beyond that. So I don't know if you're the right person to bring this up with.
Oh, dear.
Okay, so.
Tell me that, Tony.
Okay. I've lived in Poway for twenty-two years. And so Rancho Bernardo has always been our neighbor. And I have one beef with Rancho Bernardo. And I don't know who needs to.
We got your favorite color.
No. Why does the Rancho Bernardo logo use a backwards R? It, it always struck me like Toys R Us, you know, like the backwards R. And that probably goes back way back in history, right?
I'm sure it does. And I'm almost positive it has to do with the branding on the cattle that was here.
Ah, that makes sense.
Yeah. So that when you, when you have to make an iron
Yeah.
for, to brand your cows or horses, whatever.
Okay.
You want to use the least amount of metal. And so.
Okay, I can appreciate that. Okay. That makes a lot of sense.
I'll call Nancy Canfield tomorrow and find out if that's the main reason. But I'm pretty sure that's part of it. But I have another answer.
Oh, what's that?
That's because we're different and we don't mind being different. That's because we're different and we don't mind being different. Because it would be boring to be forward me. I mean, you know, come on.
You know, I, I, one of the things I always enjoy doing is, as long as our family would like to just get a quick meal at Denny's, right? Because it's fun and it's cheap and we like it. And in the lobby at the Rancho Bernardo Road Denny's, there's like this historical chronol, yeah, timeline.
Yeah.
I wonder if they.
And in Vons.
Pardon me?
And in Vons.
Oh, really? I didn't know that. The Vons on Bernardo Center? Okay, I have to go check that out. I wonder if either of those.
And this is where I can throw in my Tony Pepperoni issue, right?
Oh, please.
Because of history and what's on the walls there. They painted over the brick wall that all the students signed over the years.
Oh, man.
That was an icon in RB.
Oh, no.
I think we should start a new tradition.
We gotta.
So that's the rebel in me though. I could, you know, kind of be. What, what?
Was it rebel with the backwards R?
There you go. There you go. Love it. They do, I'm, I'm very happy to have them there. And O'Harleys was fun, but when Graziano's was there, they had such a great relationship with RB High School that I think Tony Pepperonis is starting to do that too. Because we just ordered pizza from there to give to the students who helped with the college fair.
Yeah.
Um, and they gave us a wonderful discount. So maybe I'll just continue a relationship with them so that we can start.
Now you're thinking. Yeah, you gotta bring it back. You can explain the history and why it's important.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah. You know, we, we enjoyed Graziano's. It was too bad that they switched hands. And then, you know, when it was O'Harleys, you know, Tony Russo, who, who owned O'Harleys, he was, he sat in your chair about a month ago when we did a podcast. He's a great guy. So, um, so Terry, what else would you like to share with the community, with voters about you and your candidacy and your platform, your history? What else have we not addressed that you think is important to share?
I'm now on the Palomar Council PTA.
Really?
Which is the umbrella for all the unit PTAs.
Oh, great.
Um, I mean, I've been on it. I've been a part of it as a PTA president because the presidents of each school go to that and we collaborate and learn.
So what, what geography does that encompass?
Poway Unified School District.
The Palomar.
The Palomar Council
Yeah.
incorporates the, the Poway Unified School District.
But only that? Or does they, it's not broader?
No.
Okay.
Because we have 39 potential schools.
Okay.
We only have 31 right now, but we have 39 potential schools. And that's a lot for a council to have.
Yeah.
Because you're the manager and you oversee and you guide and you mentor and help get them on track or, and, and you educate them. So the school board has a member that comes and gives an update. Teachers Union has a representative that comes and updates. So it's where a parent representative comes to learn what's going on in the district and then take it back to their unit.
Okay.
So, and we've got, so I'm, I'm on that as a board member.
Oh, that's awesome.
Rather than just an attendant. And we have started, we've developed a mentor program so that each of us have four units that we call and maintain a relationship with so that if they have questions, they have someone to call.
That's great.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's, it's beautiful because it's this nice support organization of volunteers that are kind of outside of the box, right? Outside of the box thing, outside of the box of the, of the employees of the school district, right? So it's this, this broader support organization.
But a very important section of stakeholders.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, no question.
That I find don't really have a seat in the school board meetings.
No, no, you never hear from them.
You've got the dais with the school board members and the district leadership. You have one or two parents that come up regularly and are watching things that go on. And then when something balloons or festers, it's, they'll have a small group that comes up. But the, the teachers union is always there. There's typically the support staff union that's always there. And several other staff members in the back, district staff members in the back. But very, I find that there's not a parent group that's represented, that they feel like they can be part of the conversation. When do the parents get a meeting with the superintendent? Like the unions do when they do their collective bargaining and just determine what their salaries are gonna be. So Lisa, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Lisa and I had a meeting with the superintendent to start that dialogue, to say, we want to see at the table.
Well, I mean, the, the student, is it ex officio? Is that the right word? That there's a student representative on the board?
Yes.
Imagine if there was a parent.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's where the parent needs to be. But just because there could be parents on the board, there usually are parents on the board. And I don't know how we, if you put a parent on the board, then you need a teacher rep on the board. So I don't know that, you know, in a support staff person. I'm just talking about in the room.
Ah, okay. In the room. Fair.
You can, you've got college bound group that represents themselves. You've got teachers unions that's represented. If you've got support staff that are represented, who represents the parents? So.
Great, great point.
That's what Lisa and I are wanting to do this year.
That's a, that's a great initiative. Because a lot of parents are.
They need someone to advocate for them.
Yes, they do. Yeah. Because they're so busy being a parent.
Well, and they, they may not know all the ins and outs of certain issues or what's available. And so I think they rely on PTAs to do that. And so Lisa's got a great plan for us this year. Really having us reach beyond what we've normally been doing.
Nice.
And as VP leadership, we're directly under her. I love it. I love that we're changing things and educating parents and, and doing things for the students, but also ensuring that the district knows we're here and we're valuable. Because when the district values the PTAs, the parents are gonna value the PTAs. Because we've seen the decline in membership in some areas. And so we're wanting to build up, build the membership. Because PTA is, does so many different things. Not just legislates or, you know, advocates to Sacramento, but parent awareness.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Raise funds.
Well, I've heard people describe it, it's a three-legged stool to determine the success of education. You know, like a three-legged stool. So it's like the, the parents, the teachers and the student. Those three working together is how you maximize the value and quality of the education.
Right.
So yeah, parents need to have a voice, have to advocate, have a seat at the table.
And I have been heavily involved at every school that my children have been in.
Where did they go? Tell, trace us through. Which elementary schools?
Westwood Elementary.
Okay.
Then Bernardo Heights Middle School and then RB High.
Okay.
Yeah. And so I've gotten to know a lot of the teachers. Because I think it's good that the teachers know your child. So send them a little note at the beginning, a little paragraph that says, this is how my child learns best. Here's some things that might be helpful. But of course, I know you have a lot of kids in the room, so just wanna.
I'm sure a smart teacher would embrace that.
I, I think they do. It, it just gets challenging, especially at high school with our large class sizes still.
Yeah.
So, but that, put that out there so that people would know that I have a lot of teacher support, even though I don't have the teacher union endorsing.
The teachers union and the teachers themselves are, can be very different.
They can be. And just since I already put it out there, I didn't even get an interview. They, they did a friendly endorsement because, you know, just passed a pay raise. So.
Right. Which, which put the, the district into a deficit, by the way.
Yeah, by the way. Yeah.
But that's, that's even true here in Area B where you've got one candidate, Kevin Juza, who has the union support. But then the other two candidates, Kuvera and Gardier, have supportive teachers, you know, various groups of teachers.
Right.
So yeah, they're separate.
Yeah.
And so you have supportive teachers. So good for you.
And, and two years ago, uh, when I ran, I had teachers come up to me and it was, it was a difficult conversation. What happened? And I'm like, you're gonna have to tell me because I had a two-minute interview the previous time.
Yeah.
And there, and there were like two questions asked.
Well, yeah, that was ceremonial probably, right?
Exactly.
You know, they had.
No ceremony this year.
No.
Yeah.
They just cut it out completely.
Just letting you know.
Yeah, that's just not right.
No conversation. No seat at the table.
Yeah, that's just not right. So, well, well, Terry, I've enjoyed our time. I mean, we've, we've had a wonderful conversation. I know we went a lot longer than the 45 minutes that we thought about in the beginning. I haven't checked the clock, but it's probably well over an hour.
Probably. But that's okay. It's been fun. So any of you who haven't done this yet, once you get past the first five minutes, it's good.
Okay. And the nerves kind of calm. Okay. Which is you, me and a bunch of lights in here. So, um, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Terry Norwood, you're a candidate for Poway Unified School Board, Area C, which is largely Rancho Bernardo. You're the Rancho Bernardo candidate. You're connected in the community with the PTA and the high schools and the planning commissions and the, uh, the foundations in Rancho Bernardo. I wish you the best of luck.
Thanks. I'm on the ballot. There's another funny way to, to look at my race.
Oh, what's that?
So it was one, an incumbent at the top and then me and then another incumbent. So I'm the cream in the middle of the Oreo.
Ah, okay. I like that. And it says Teresa on.
It says Teresa so that people know that Terry is a female.
Okay. And that's smart. That's good thinking.
You know, you gotta just.
You gotta differentiate.
Make sure that all your, you know, little baskets are, have a little bit in them.
Exactly. Well, Terry, good luck to you these remaining few weeks and, and best of luck on November 6.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.